All right, welcome everyone to the Tuesday, July twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four, Tom Water City Council Work Session. And we will. Council member Althouser is in traffic at the moment and will try to join as soon as he can, and Councilmember Von Holtz may not be joining us this evening. So with that, everyone else is in attendance. So we will then go to our first item, which is the ten-year destin- dis- destination. Boy, I apparently can't talk tonight, sorry. Ten-year destination master plan, a community-driven sustainable tourist plan. And Annette Pitts from the Olympia Beyond is here to do the presentation, so welcome.
Thank you. So I really appreciate you guys making time for me tonight. If it's okay, I'm gonna queue up a PowerPoint and I will walk you through it. Does that work?
That works.
Okay. Let's see here. I'm going to share. Can you guys see a PowerPoint?
Uh, yes, but it's not in, in, oh, there we go, perfect.
That work? You can see it?
That works.
Okay. So again, thank you so much. I'm so glad to be here and talking with you guys. I believe I have thirty minutes, thereabouts, is that right?
Think like thirty, twenty, thirty, yeah, somewhere in that neighborhood.
I can talk fast. So the first thing we'll go over is just what I'm gonna tell you about. You know, nobody enters into a project like a ten-year destination master plan without a good reason. And so I thought, even though I've been kind of talking to everybody about what a plan is, I haven't really gone into a lot of detail about why would we do this in the first place. I wanted you guys to understand the why behind it. So usually that means there were probably some things that we needed to deal with. So that first bullet, what were the problems that we were trying to solve? Then I want you to understand what the process was so that you know, you know, was it inclusive? Did Tom Water have a voice in this process? And the answer is yes and yes, but I want to explain more about that. I'm gonna be talking about how we're gonna move the process forward, and I want you to think about how the city of Tom Water can participate and benefit. I'm gonna show you some case studies that were included in the plan so that you can start visualizing. You know, maybe when we talk about what the actual action items are that are coming out of the plan, when looking at those case studies, it might help you kind of think about, hmm, there might be some things that we can do here. So and then after that, we'll do some Q and A. I will say too, you do not need to wait to ask your questions. Excuse me. If, as I'm going along, you have something you wanna share or you have a question, I would just hop in there and go for it. Otherwise, it can be really boring for you to sit there and just listen to me talking nonstop for thirty minutes. So with that said, I'm gonna dive in. So the reasons why we did the destination master plan in the first place, there are a few. When I started three years ago in two thousand and twenty-one, there was already a, what they call a D-NEXT assessment that was on contract on our books. My predecessor in this job had done the same assessment back in two thousand and sixteen, and our contract was to follow up five years later and to do the same assessment in two thousand and twenty-one. So when I came in, it was time to hit assessment number two. And the D-NEXT assessment is really kind of the gold standard in the tourism industry where these consultants come in and they evaluate your destination on a whole slew of variables, and I'm gonna share what those variables were in the next slide. So that's probably one of your questions. And when they looked at our destination both in two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and twenty-one, unfortunately, what they said was based on the feedback that was received in that process, Thurston County was found to be weak as a destination. They also found that we were weak as, as they measured in terms of community alignment. And community alignment, another way to define community alignment is how well are you working as a team with the people in your community? And I was just talking to Angela today, and she's like, girl, you need to talk about teamwork. And I was really glad that she said that because that's what this plan is all about. At that time in two thousand and twenty-one, they said, you're not, you're not really, your peers in the industry, not in the industry, but in the county, aren't feeling that partnership. And they didn't feel that partnership in two thousand and sixteen either. So as somebody who was brand new in my role and brand new in the community, that was a big flag for me that said, uh-oh, we've got some work to do. Then, again, kind of working backward in those first couple of years, two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two, when I came in, I was getting to know the organization, I was going out and meeting all of our peers in the community. And what I was finding was that we were really kind of operating what our industry would consider to be a dated organizational model. DMOS or Destination Marketing and Management Organizations really made a shift back in probably around two thousand and fourteen because of this whole issue about communities realized you're not gonna be successful as a tourism destination if you're not successful in your teamwork and your community alignment. And so when we found that we're like, oh, we're still kind of not doing, we're not organizationally set up to do this type of work. It was another flag for me that's like, we need to make a change here in our approach. All the way up to just last year, we were still as an industry in Thurston County trying to rebound from jobs that were lost and businesses that were lost due to the pandemic. So another reason why we looked at the destination master plan was because we needed to figure out how do we build a pathway back to regaining those lost jobs and those entrepreneurial opportunities? So the destination master plan was really kind of a solution to all of these kind of almost related problems that, that I was being made aware of in those first couple of years. Does that make sense? Okay. And in the words of Angela, teamwork is what it was all about. So we needed a way to formalize that. When I was talking about the D-NEXT assessment and the fact that they evaluated, and it wasn't just the consultants, by the way, that evaluated us on these variables. There was a survey that went out to probably all of you and our stakeholders throughout the county. And they were asked to rate us across the board on these variables. And that's where these findings came from. It was not that the consultants came in and they did a little bit of recon and they said, this is the situation. This is what our peers here in the county said. So these were the variables that they evaluated us on. And when it came to community alignment, these were the variables that they evaluated us on and that we were found to not be doing as well as what we should or could have been. And this slide really talks about why it matters in the first place. And I honestly think if, if you took nothing away from this entire presentation, except what is on this slide, I would still be happy because this slide talks about why it all matters in the first place. I think a lot of the time when people think about tourism, they're just kind of thinking about, yeah, it's just people going on vacation. It's really nothing that relates to me. And this slide talks about how tourism really does relate to all of us. Tourism is all about community quality of life. It's about what is it like for you and I to live and work here and try to do business here? And how that relates to tourism is, first of all, all of this cycle begins with a visit. Most of us were not born in Thurston County. Some of us were, and I get that. But a lot of us came here because we visited once and we loved it. We had friends or family that were here that we came to visit and we loved it. Maybe we moved here for a job and when we came to interview, we loved it. But that hook that brought you here in any one of those scenarios, that's tourism. And if you build a place where people will wanna visit, then you are gonna build a place where people want to live. And if you build a place that people want to live, meaning someplace that has lots of, you know, services like EMS, fire and police, places that have housing, that have job opportunities, that have educational opportunities, that have parks for their family and friends to explore in, that have the arts, that have culinary opportunities. If you have that kind of place where people wanna live, then people are gonna want to work here as well. And once people have figured out, hey, this is a great place to live and work, then you're gonna have a kind of place that people will, will invest in. And when you have the kind of place that people will invest in, then again, you're gonna have a kind of place that people think, holy cow, this is a great place to visit. So tourism is about quality of life, and it's not enough for an organization like Experience Olympia and Beyond to just be marketing. We have to also make sure that we are in the business of hospitality and creating an environment for teamwork where all of our peers from each of our jurisdictions, like the city of Tom Water, understand that they have an important role in this cycle and that we all need to be kind of rowing the same direction towards a common goal. So that's what the plan is about. The thing, I guess there's two points about the plan before we get into the meat of it that are important for you guys to note. It's not just a plan about figuring out what can we do to make visitors happy. We cannot even think about what our visitors are gonna like if we haven't figured out what our locals will like first. It's critical that anything that we propose, especially when we're thinking about development opportunities, really resonate with the people who live and work here first. So that's the first thing that we, I wanna get across. And then the second thing is when we get into the, the plan itself and we start talking about those twenty-nine issues and opportunities that were revealed, these are not mandates. They are not instructions to the city. What they are is a, a will that you can draw from. All of the findings within the plan are kind of recommendations or opportunities that your peers who live and work and visit the county have recommended. And I'll talk about how they all came to be next. And how I envision people using this plan, especially when you're a jurisdiction like the city. Let's say, here's a crazy idea, maybe the city of Tom Water wants to promote brewing and your brew history through your product development. And maybe you're working on a craft district. And you're looking at, maybe you wanna look at community development block grants or curb grants or loans or what have you. And you're referencing that kind of brewing culture. At that point, you're gonna see if that, and it is, if that's captured in the destination master plan as a community-held priority and shared value, you're gonna be able to say to your, your funding source, hey, not only do we think this is important, but over a thousand people that participated in this destination master plan process, they also said it's important. And so we have the backing of our community behind us. Also, since it's included in an Experience Olympia and Beyond planning document, you can count on the fact that we're gonna come in and support you if you want a letter of endorsement for your project. So this is really meant to not only be a teamwork process, but really put our, what is that? Put your money where your mouth is. If you, if we're gonna talk about it and say that we think it's important, we're gonna support you through the process if you find it's important as well. When we got into the planning process, I think it's important to note that this really was a team process. We had multi-juris- jurisdictional support. Each of our major funding municipalities supported us. Our Economic Development Council signed on, the Thurston Chamber signed on. We had really broad support to move forward with this project. We thought it was important to, to make sure that the committee that was steering this process was not staff-driven by our organization. Certainly, we convened the process, but we wanted to make sure that the people that were ultimately shaping how these priorities came to be were a broad, wide-reaching, inclusive steering committee. And you will see initially Austin Ramirez, who was previously with the city of Tom Water, sat on this steering committee. And then Lisa came in, Lisa Parks came in at the very end. This project started June of two thousand and twenty-three and wrapped this June. So there was a lot of time spent on the project with a very inclusive team of people working on it. This slide just shows you the kind of crazy comprehensive process that we went through to build the plan. This was not a simple, well, we did a survey and we're done kind of plan. This, like I said, it was a year-long effort. Our steering committee met monthly. We started out by bringing in our consultants after we went through our pretty lengthy RFP process to find the right vendor. We brought the consultant to Thurston County at first, and we took them for three days. We built an itinerary where we went to different locations throughout the breadth of Thurston County every fifteen to thirty minutes, three days in a row, twelve hours a day, so that they could not only see the different destinations and attractions within the county, but also talk to the stakeholders at those locations. We wanted to show maybe some of the toughest situations that we're dealing with. And we also showed them some of the best and, you know, most exciting opportunities that we were working toward. We did a comprehensive review of strategic comprehensive transportation mitigation. You name the kind of economic development plan that might be published and in use within Thurston County. We got our hands on a copy and we, I think we wound up getting over one hundred different plans that are being executed on today independently within the community. We used AI to overlay all of them, over a thousand pages, and to suss out what were the commonly-held values? What were the things that people were working on at the same time that they thought were really important? Maybe they were common opportunities and things people were excited about and they wanted more of. Or maybe they were commonly-held challenges that everybody was kind of working on independently. We wanted to do this because, A, we wanted to make sure that our plan was not counter to what was already deemed to be important within the community. And we also just wanted to see how much opportunity is there today for collaboration that really wasn't being realized by everybody working independently. So it was a really important first step of our process. We then truly planned an analysis of every possible thing that we could measure. We did, you know, your kind of garden varieties, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats analysis, a SWOT analysis of the destination. We did an industry trends analysis. We did a COVID impacts and consumer trends analysis, gaps analysis, market analysis. If there was something to be measured, we measured it. We did a very comprehensive surveying process where we sent the surveys out to our stakeholders in the industry, meaning people who are either working in or adjacent to the tourism industry directly. We also sent it to our residents that maybe they aren't working in or adjacent to tourism, but your, your lives are impacted and affected by tourism, whether for the better or not better. And we sent it to prospective visitors and people who have visited the area. And we asked folks all similar questions to get an understanding of, you know, what do people like that we're doing? Where do they see that we have more opportunity to improve? What would they like to see more of? And what would they like to see us maybe remedy? We did, let's see here, we did one-on-one meetings with stakeholders with our consultant. We did industry focus groups so that people representing specific sectors had their voices included in the process as well. We had a public forum that residents could come and we shared the process with them and they could share their thoughts and feelings about tourism and destination development. And we also did a visioning workshop series with our stakeholders so that they could take a look at everything that we had collected to date and start that prioritizing process. So and meanwhile, again, our steering committee was meeting monthly and weighing in on everything that we were finding. So it was a really comprehensive process and we, I'm really proud of how many people participated, getting over a thousand different people to share their views was, was a lift and one I'm really happy about. So now we'll get to what we actually found. Through all of these various processes that we went through, over and over again, we had the same twenty-nine priorities kept floating up. And we decided rather than kind of pulling that list right from the get-go that we were going to include them all so that they were captured. But what we would do is take a look at all of them, kind of from that thirty thousand foot level. If we were saying, we're gonna evaluate all of these priorities that keep coming up over and over again based on, if they were to be implemented on a county-wide scale, how would we prioritize those and classify those? And so the group, meaning the steering committee, looked at those twenty-nine issues and opportunities and put them into three tiers of actionability. Now, keep in mind, as I mentioned, there, when they made those decisions about prioritizing, that's it if we were looking at them purely from a county-wide viewpoint. We fully understand that as a jurisdiction, your priorities are going to be completely different. So we have the city of Tom Water's priority list included in the plan, just like each of our jurisdictional partners, they provided their priorities from that twenty-nine and how they would shape them as well. So and certainly for our organization, how we're able to execute on these is gonna be different than at a county-wide level with all of our various partners weighing in. Does that make sense? Okay. So here are the items that floated up as the things that the steering committee said, I think these should be the first things on a county-wide level we should be prioritizing. So agritourism and the Bountiful Byway, arts entertainment, live music and nightlife, conference and meeting space, destination stewardship, events, festivals and seasonality, expanded diversified lodging, family attractions, the Quamish Resort Complex Development, retail and commercial district development, sporting events and facilities and waterfront activation. Phase two would come in, so let's say one of these top items gets ticked off. All of a sudden, we feel really good. We've got plenty of conference and meeting space and it moves off that top priority list. One of these items from phase two would be moved up. So phase two was aviation planning, culinary destination, downtown Olympia development, mental hea- mental health and related issues, outdoor recreation, tourism funding, trails and networks. So one thing that's important to note too, just because something didn't land on tier one for initial implementation, it's not because the steering committee felt that it wasn't as important. They also looked at each of these opportunities in terms of how many resources do we have to actually move the needle on it? How much authority do we have? How much ability do we have to actually affect change? So some of these items, like obviously, you know, agritourism and Thurston Bountiful Byway, promoting that as a product in the area is probably gonna be easier than solving our, you know, mental health challenges in the community. So we don't wanna say that they're not as important because they're way important, but our ability as a visitor bureau to affect change there is probably not gonna be as easy. Does that make sense? Okay. Then third tier that came in, we called the monitoring phase, which we would treat it the same way as the previous. So obviously, if something gets moved off the list, these things move up. So this is where we had craft beverage, marketing and promotion, doing business and new investments, equestrian tourism, innovation and technology, public gathering spaces, rural development and workforce housing. Another point that I think is really important to note is obviously, these are just the titles of these issues and opportunities. Each one of these headings has an entire chapter of findings within the destination master plan that will detail what does this actually mean and what type of action could be taken. Lieta?
Thank you. I'm just wondering, in this process, which is amazing, did it come up like regarding sustainable goods and services in our community? Is that like a selling point, something attraction, like greener products, greener services? Did that come up anywhere?
It did. So destination stewardship is one of our priorities. And under the heading of destination stewardship, it's really looking at sustainability. And sustainability can be looked at through a lot of different lenses. So that's really where I would see that. But yes, it absolutely is a priority and was captured in this process. Okay, so next, my board got together. We had a full day retreat. And thank you, Angela. Angela was a part of that process. And we had to have kind of a reality check because we got our three hundred-plus-page destination master plan, which by the way, I have a hardbound copy for each of you, so I'll be taking those to the city council. It's also available on our website as a digital download. If there's anybody viewing this and they wanna see it, everything is on our website in the industry section. There's also a one-page cheat sheet. If you want something to help you cut through the three hundred-plus pages, we got you because we know not everybody wants this for light fireside reading for the next year. But my board said, you know, we've, we've gotta kind of dwell in reality and we know that if everything is important, nothing's important. And we are a small organization. You know, you look at the, you know, the various nonprofits in our area, we're, we're one of the smaller ones. And so we have to really be cognizant of tightening our focus so that we can actually do good work and affect positive change. So the board determined, well, let me back up. In the destination master plan itself, the steering committee said there are certain ones of these issues and opportunities that we think that the visitor bureau can actually lead. So this whole list represents the issues and opportunities that the steering committee said, we believe these are the things that Experience Olympia and Beyond can lead. Then my board came in at the retreat and they said, there are certain ones that we will hit first because we think we can move the needle most in a timely fashion. And those are the ones that you see on here that are bold and in orange. So connectivity relates to several things. It relates to, it could be wayfinding and what we call dispersion. So the way we operate is we wanna, you know, we wanna use our brand and our work to, you know, kind of hook or attract a large traveling audience. But then phase two is we have to disperse them throughout the county. And that dispersion piece is probably one of the most important things that we do, and that is one of the top things that connectivity speaks to. How do we get people, once they're here, to explore through all of our communities? How do we use technology and our tools like our event calendar on our website, which has insane visitation? I've been running nonprofit organizations and DMOS for decades. And this is the first destination that I've worked at where our homepage isn't our number one page on our website, our event calendar is. So how do we get people who are producing events to submit their events? It's free and it's easy. But we just have to figure out how do we get folks to know that it's there and to please use it because it isn't gonna cost you anything. So that's kind of connectivity that there's a lot more pieces. We could talk about arterial development with capital improvement and things like that. But connectivity was one that we thought we could get working on pretty quickly. Outdoor recreation is low-hanging fruit. We live in an amazing, beautiful location. Our parks are stellar. We have incredible trail systems nearby, but we don't have maybe the best signage. You know, Capital Forest is maybe not the easiest thing for a visitor to navigate. We have outdoor recreation opportunities on the water, but we don't necessarily have people guiding those outdoor experiences. If you're somebody from the East Coast and you see this amazing Puget Sound and you're like, heck yeah, I wanna get out on that water in a kayak. They, there are a couple places you can rent kayaks, but if you're not somebody who's done it before, it's gonna be a little intimidating to go out to tugboat annies and rent a kayak and just hit the Puget Sound on your own. We've, it's not just that we don't necessarily have some of these things signed. Some aspects of our outdoor recreation really need small business incentivizing to have that small business infrastructure built out. And I suspect it's probably because folks don't know that we need it. So we, we need to be better about kind of flagging, you know, whether it's our jurisdictional partners, our economic development partners, so that they know what do we need in terms of some of these priorities? So that, those were just the ones that were relating to outdoor recreation. Sports events and facilities, sports is a huge part of the city of Tom Water's ecosystem. Sports events and facilities, sports is a huge part of the city of Tombwater's ecosystem. Your golf course brings in a tremendous amount of visitors. Schools bring in a tremendous amount of visitors through sports events. But what other sports facilities could we develop to capitalize on so much unmet demand? We, we lose business hand over fist to our neighbors throughout the state that have more availability at the facilities that they have. We have tremendous facilities, but they are booked. People are, you know, the word's out, we've got an amazing place and they're often just full, which is great, but a lot of the times they're full local teams and, you know, folks that need them and rightly so. It can make it hard to offer those facilities to, you know, out of area teams that would love to come here and bring some of that tourism revenue with them. Tourism funding is super important. It's not just so that we actually have the funds to do the work that we know that we, that the community wants us to do. But if we're saying, hey, city of Tombwater, the community says they want more sports events and facilities, we need to be able to figure out, how do we support you in accessing more funding resources to be able to develop these types of projects? Whether it's, you know, just endorsing projects or writing letters of support or you know, should we be creating a five oh one C foundation where we can leverage additional grants that we can't leverage right now to match some funds that you put in? So we're really trying to think in new ways to help provide funding support that we just haven't been able to in the past. So that's what tourism funding is about. And then certainly tribal relationships and tourism is key. Our tribal partners are, you know, they're our original people in these areas and they've got incredible stories to tell. And but the important thing to note is they're not our stories to choose to tell. We need to have the relationships in place so that our tribal partners feel really good about saying, hey, Experience Olympia and Beyond, I would love you guys to help us tell this story so that we're framing it in a way that feels good for our tribal partners and doesn't feel like we're, you know, controlling a narrative that's not ours to control. Other key takeaways from our board retreat, just to give you, I guess, a little inside intel about what we're going to be looking at sooner than later. As I mentioned, when it comes to tourism funding, you know, we know we can't keep pulling the same levers. There's only so much lodging tax to go around and we've got a lot of people competing for them and rightly so. Our tourism promotion area assessments are, you know, going strong, but they're not enough to pay for the work that we need to do. And frankly, a lot of the recommended projects that are contained in the destination master plan, we wouldn't be able to spend those types of funds on them because both lodging taxes and tourism promotion area assessments can exclusively be used for projects that bring in visitation, preferably for overnight stays in hotels. So if we can't prove that we result in that type of outcome, then we can't use those funds that way. So we have to find new funding streams so that we can do, you know, maybe education focused work. Let's say we decided to do a away showing campaign that linked our communities together where we're telling your historical stories, or maybe we're bringing in our indigenous storytelling as well. Those are all education focused and they're not necessar- I can't say I'm going to bring somebody from Jersey because I built these signs. They're going to enjoy them when they're here, but it's not going to result in new visitation. So I have to figure out new ways to fund projects like that. So our board is interested in potentially pursuing the creation of a tandem organization that would be a five oh one C three that could focus on projects that had to do with education and perhaps the arts and public safety, some of the things that we can't fund through the public funds that we do have access to. We're going to advocate for statewide tourism funding. If we had a strong statewide tourism model like our partners throughout the rest of the country, we would all do so much better. So that's a really important piece. We're going to seek guidance from IANTA. If you're not familiar with them, they're the American Indian and Alaska Native Tourism Alliance. I've worked with them for over a decade. They do fantastic work, working with tribal partners throughout the country. And I'm hoping to maybe be able to solicit their guidance in developing regional tribal product for us to start communicating about and sharing. We're going to be working on that community alignment piece that we talked about at the beginning. You know, how do we really build this team out so that we're working together and everybody understands that they have a place on the team? And it's not about us. We are the mouthpiece and we are the doers of the work. But we, we fully recognize that this has to be a team effort if it's going to be successful. And the following bullets are just, you know, I think they're almost like no brainers. We have to be communicative. We have to listen to our peers. We need to share. We need to be communicating. We need to tell you why this matters in the first place, not just show up and say, hey, we did a thing and expect that folks are going to be excited. We want you to know why it matters. And we do have to be more competitive for resources that are scarce because we don't have any choice. So and then advocating collectively with one voice so that we all get more work done successfully. So we're rounding, we're rounding into the Q and A portion. Next steps are because the destination master plan was completed mid-year and our work plan and our budget cycle was already set, we're planning to integrate our first kind of go forward work into our 2025 budget. So we're working on that budget right now, but we're going to reconvene the folks that were in our original master plan steering committee. That committee is going to disband. However, we're going to create a destination master plan task force where that steering committee is invited back in. But then we're also going to invite in other interested parties. If you're somebody who, I was just in a meeting, I was at the Economic Development Council and their steady meeting out in South County. And there was a gal there sharing who was the new Thurston County Climate Mitigation Specialist, I think was her title. And I realized she would be like an amazing person to be working on destination stewardship. So we're going to be looking to tap and identify people that can either lead or support some of these initiatives where we don't have expertise or influence. Or if people are just interested parties, we want to make sure, again, that this is inclusive and that folks understand where they can weigh in and start affecting change and be a part of the process. And here's the fun part at the very end. So I, we were talking in an earlier meeting today. It's, it's hard to really shine a light on, well, what are we going to do? You know, we talked about the twenty nine action items and priorities that came out of the plan, but we can't really say what we're going to do quite yet because we're going to reconvene in Q one of 2025 to start this process. But I thought it would be worthwhile to show you some examples of what other communities have done as a result of their destination master plan. And these are all included in our destination master plan as case studies. The first one is in Fort Collins, Colorado. They, they went through the same process and they found that they had one of the same issues that we have, which is they needed some expanded and diversified lodging. We have a lot of great branded franchise lodging that meets a very specific need, but we don't have a lot of lodging options that are outside of that. And so in Fort Collins, they put together, they incentivized the development of this new property called the Elizabeth, where it's in their Old Town District, which kind of made me think of Tombwater a little bit. You're not an Old Town District, but you are a very historical district. And they created the Signature Boutique Hotel where they integrated the local music culture into their actual property and how it's designed and the programs that they, and the things that they offer their guests. And it really made me think about like, how incredible would it be to incentivize the development of a boutique hotel product in Tombwater that really showcased your brew culture? I mean, I would want to stay there. So these are big pie in the sky ideas, but these are things that have happened in other communities directly resulting from their plans. So this is what happened in Fort Collins. Another example that made me think of the city of Tombwater was a case study that was from Portland, Maine, where they identified in their plan, just like we did, that they wanted to be identified as a culinary destination. And so they went through, you know, kind of a co-branding process where they came up with, what does that brand really look like? They created a whole campaign around the culinary brand. But I think the thing that made me really think about the city of Tombwater is that they looked at their own, the city of Portland, Maine, looked at their own kind of strategic plan and what their priorities are. And they kind of put into their planning process, hey, we are going to prioritize funding things, funding projects, and it made me think about LTAC. We're going to prioritize things that support our strategic plan. And in their case, they said, we want to be known as a culinary destination. So when people were looking at those funding allocations, one of the first things they did is say, how are you going to complement what we've decided we really want to portray? So through that process, they were able to really tighten, tighten the focus of the work that people were trying to do on their behalf. And of course, you know, this makes sense for you guys. You know, one of the priorities is the craft beverage sector. So a case study came from Bellingham where they did the same type of process as the previous slide where they were talking about, you know, not only do we need to brand the area as, you know, a destination for craft beer events and festivals, but how do you incentivize the development and streamline the development of further events and festivals by looking at what your strategy is and saying, we're going to give you added points if you tick these boxes. So there's a lot of different ways that you can skin the proverbial cat. It's terrible analogy. But I thought some of those case studies might be meaningful for you and maybe give you a little more reason to go and, and read our three hundred page plan. You can skip to the parts that are most important to you. But there's a lot of exciting things that can come out of this process. And if I left you with one detail, it is that you, you have and you should have a seat at the table in terms of planning, you know, destination development for the community. And I really hope that you'll take advantage of it going forward.
Any questions? Councilwoman Dola.
Thanks, Mayor. I don't have a question, just noting the time and that I'm looking forward to reading that. And I'll just follow up with an email with any comments or questions. Thank you. That was awesome work.
Thank you. I appreciate it and look forward to chatting with you.
Anything else? Councilwoman Jefferson, did you have something?
Yes, no, I just wanted to thank Annette. This was very thorough. Your slides were beautiful and I liked how you gave the examples. So thanks Annette, a lot of hard work and I appreciate you.
Well, thank you and we appreciate you. It's so nice to have Councilman Jefferson on our committee. She always has so many meaningful suggestions that help us really kind of understand the city of Tombwater's priorities. You guys are so important to us that I really, I appreciate, I appreciate the direct communication so that we can tick the boxes that we need to. So thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. I think I'm good to go. Thank you, Mayor Sullivan and group. I will sign off.
All right. Can you end share first? Thank you. Perfect.
All right. Take care, guys.
You bet. All right. Our next item is diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging budget planning. Lisa or Brad, who is going to start this off and introduce Lisa?
I'm going to, no, I'm, I'm going to ask Brad to do this if he's there.
No, I'm, I'm here.
Yeah, I will, I will follow up with a few comments when Dr. Peralas is done, but I would like to ask Brad to do the introductions.
Yeah. So thank you again, Councilperson of the council. By the way, I have read a good portion of the destination plan and I do recommend that just to tie this all together. I think it's always important to get transitions going. For this particular item, Dr. Linda Peralas will be presenting a summary of our work to date with the Demarche Consulting Group on implementing our diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging concepts with the city staff. We've had a lot of internal work with the management team that will be going over as part of this process. And then I think also more importantly, we'll be discussing how this work will be incorporated into the city's upcoming biennial budgeting process, which the council has just started. We are, the, the project has morphed over the course of its period of starting. I think the important thing to say about that is it's just really responding to some new questions that we didn't really foresee as we started this process. And I would encourage you to listen and be prepared with questions for Linda and I'll be available as well. So thank you.
Okay. Hello, everybody. I'm going to share my screen and let's make sure I get the right. Yes, here we go. Make sure I've got the right project up here. I've been looking forward to this. I make sure I've got this slideshow up here. Can you see that?
It's not, oh, there we go. Perfect. Yes.
There it is. Okay. So hello, I'm Dr. Linda Peralas. Everybody always stumbles over my last name, so we just settle on Dr. Linda. Been doing that for years. Demarche Consulting Group, I'll just give you a little overview, has been around for about thirty five years. We're old hands at, at doing some of this work and also knowing about city governments, city and county governments and working in a lot of the departments and understanding the challenges of city management and city department management and asset management, a lot of those areas. So it's been a pleasure working with the leadership team. I'm just going to run briefly through these slides and talk about what we've, what we've worked on so far. This has been a focus in the last sort of six months about an agenda of learning. The objectives with the leadership team have, have been around providing the individuals with an awareness of self and the principles of diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging. To build a foundation, a shared language, better capacity, to model empathy and behavior in recognizing both their work with staff and with the community. So it's been a, a great segue from the previous presentation. I was looking and thinking about that circle, that virtuous circle of if you have a better community, you have more visitors coming to your community and more work, more housing. It's a virtuous circle. So DEIB fits perfectly into that virtuous circle. We focused some on, after that shared language, on recognizing biases to build better habits that invite inclusion and belonging as public servants, learning to be more curious, accountable and comfortable with courageous conversations. Some of that's been full of, of questioning and a little bit of laughter. We started our work with giving participants a rather sizable workbook that's self-driven learning and DEI. And I'm happy also to share that with council members if you'd like. It includes, as I said, exercises for self-driven learning, includes topics ranging from biases to privilege to stereotypes to what's the difference between systemic and structural racism and discrimination, lessons about microaggressions, things that often are, are habits that we don't even know we engage in. The stuff that you don't know what you don't know, things about generational trauma, the stuff that I sometimes call button pushing. It's got exercises about cultural competency, which is often really helpful in working with persons from other cultures, whether that might be tribal members or immigrants or persons from other cultures, whether that might be tribal members or immigrants or refugees. Really strong lessons on the difference between equality and equity and the use of equity toolkits. The workbook has a extensive bibliography and includes a lot of video links that are helpful for, for our visual learners and a place to take notes and capture self-accountability. And then we went into a real strong focus one day on let's define our terms and let's build a shared language. So we started with what is DEIB? Starting with a definition of diversity. So diversity is simply what you get. It's an outcome of practices, policies, systems, service levels. And it appears in things like your housing codes, your ordinances, your hiring practices, things like community policing, things like human and legal services, things like the quality of your customer service and community outreach. And just apropos of following up, it appears in things like your, uh, tourism and the quality of your, your parks. Do you have a, uh, for instance, uh, a playground for children with, uh, physical disabilities? Those are the things that um, are tenants of diversity. In essence, your community's reputation as a welcoming and affordable place to live. So you begin to think, um, about diversity in different ways. It's not just do you have people of color or a variety of, of, uh, cultures in your community and in your workforce? But do you have a diversity of, uh, backgrounds, cultural competence, of intelligence, of experiences? Of access for disabled and neurodivergent individuals in your community and in your workforce. So we spent some time on understanding what diversity might mean, particularly for, um, the city of Tom Water and for the workforce in Tom Water. Then we, um, continued with understanding what equity is and what equity is not. Equity is not equality. But equity is what you want. And you get that by a continual audit of policy and practices and service levels and selection of projects to ensure the equitable distribution of resources and services. It's not something you look at once and you're done. You're constantly continuously improving to achieve equity. It's an accommodation for underserved populations and individuals such as handicapped access, cooling centers, wellness checks, affordable housing, public defenders, human services. It's a reasonable accommodation within the workforce. So it's a moving target. Um, and it's what you want to achieve. Hon- honestly and often looking for an equitable distribution of limited resources and services. Inclusion, it's what you do. It's how you behave. So you're constantly growing in understanding how you become an inclusive city and organization uh, of both the communities and an organization's culture. A shared belief and about working together for greater good. Again, I hearken back to, it really apropos of the previous presentation. Uh, achieving greater teamwork in reaching out, uh, regionally as, as well as within the community requires transparency, requires outreach, extensive planning, and it's a measured inclusiveness. Um, I was really impressed about the previous presentation, talking about all of the different ways they measured, uh, to understand how they're, how well they were listening and how they were including in their plan the voices of the people they got to participate. The same is true of DEIB. You're always reaching out. You're always learning to listen. And I have to say, in, in my career, that's been one of the greatest challenges for me has been to learn to listen. And that brings, I think, inclusion more than anything does. And belonging, finally, is how you feel. So that sense of psychological safety in the workplace and in the institutions of a community, whether those are schools or centers or parks or shopping areas. A community that feels safe and inclusive is a great community to live in, to move to, to visit, uh, improves that tourism. So again, I come back to the previous presentation. That's a great community to live in, to visit, um, to build a business, to grow a business. It's often measured by the participation of citizens and staff on surveys about how they feel about their community, its amenities and their access to them. So again, I come back to, uh, how much access do we provide for the kinds of people who live in our communities? And how much do we know about those citizens? So we, we spent some time on gaining a shared language about what DEIB really is and what it isn't. We also then moved on to understanding some things about explicit and implicit types of bi- biases. And I certainly don't want to insult your intelligence, um, but just to be clear, implicit biases are those you don't know you don't know you have. We often are just really in, we're really blind to biases that we're so unaware of them, we're shocked to discover them. Explicit biases are those that we have and we're, um, we can be made aware of them pretty quickly, but we're habitualized to them. So for instance, um, a confirmation bias, we're only seeking data analysis and hires that confirm our pre-existing views, and I won't go through all of these. But I often make the joke or the comment that when I went to Engineering 101 School way back many, many decades ago, they taught me that there are engineers and there are other forms of life. So that's an, that's confirmation bias. And I, I laugh about that. So I've learned to get over that. But in every profession, um, people have confirmation bias. Accountants think like accountants do. Engineers think like engineers do. Politicians think like politicians do. So confirmation bias is one of the most common and one of the most, one of the strongest, uh, biases that are explicit for people. They're aware they have them and they apply them in their thinking um, because it's, it expedites your thinking. It helps you think faster. And for us to learn not to apply confirmation bias is a big lift for everybody. It really is. We have to, um, strengthen our thinking, slow down our thinking and understand our thinking to um, get in the way of each of these biases as we work with people and as we work with projects and as we work with programs and as we work with communities. So we went through all of these biases and had some fun learning about how we apply these in the workplace and how we apply these as leaders. Everything from beauty bias and just world bias and retribution bias and racial cultural language or name bias and age bias and gender bias. All of these are examples of explicit bias that are part of our habitual thinking. So it was good work to do with the leaders and I have to, uh, commend them for being open and honest and, uh, approachable. We made good progress. Another thing that we've accomplished, uh, is building an equity maturity model. And you don't have to be able to read this to, to understand its usefulness. Um, we developed four areas of focus for equity work in the organization. Um, one area is communication, another is standards, another is performance, and another is improvement. And in those four areas, we developed four categories, um, being emerging, uh, basic and compliant, progressing and tactical, and then finally the highest level, integrated and strategic. So pretty much everybody agreed that we're still at the emerging level. In some areas, maybe getting basic and compliant, but this is a growth progression that the city wants to, uh, embark on. And I'll move you right on to that, that led us to building a DEIB strategic plan for the next couple of years, next couple of bienniums. Outlining tangible steps the city can work to create that more equitable, equitable environment and embed equity tools in decision-making and further commit to developing an inclusive community. So those three areas of infant, infant emphasis, sorry about that, are organizational culture, communications and engagement, and plans, policies and budgets. So that's what you're going to be seeing in the budget work. Those areas of emphasis, those areas of, um, integration into budget work and integration into departmental priorities that align with, um, a priority of or align with a DEIB value set. So the budget work with the DEIB strategic plan pretty much says that, you know, once there's agreement on the first biennial priorities, the priority will be further developed by the leads. And then what I've been working with each, uh, director on are understanding their resource constraints and their organizational needs and helping them develop um, great stories to understand how we close those resource gaps and still um, meet these DEIB values in all of their programs and projects and service levels. Um, so that we continually invest in both the organization and the community. That, uh, we tell those budget stories in an articulate and data-supported way. So I know I went through that pretty quickly. And I, uh, asked Lisa, um, if she wanted to, uh, open it up for questions, and she said, oh, absolutely. So, um, Commissioner, Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Dr. Linda. One quick question to help me like put it all together. Um, when you talk about organizational culture, where in the spectrum of work, where do our boards and commission and council fit into this?
Well, um, I would love to work with boards, commissions and councils on, on understanding the, the shared language as well. And also through, um, the leadership team as they work with boards, commissions and council. So that from my perspective, it's essential that the shared language be a foundation for, um, all, uh, boards, commissions, councils that, that represent input to the city. And that as programs and projects and so forth continue and are developed, a foundation of shared language is, is an essential thing. If we're not talking about the same thing, we're not using the same language. Um, we often, you know, pass each other by.
Thank you, Dr. Linda.
Any other questions? So I just want to say, you know, I, I know that it hasn't, um, been obvious, but there's been a lot of work that's been going on for a period of time. And, um, and so it's kind of like you have to set your foundation first to make all of this work. Uh, so the first thing is keep dealing with executive staff, directors to make sure that everyone is on the same page. So as we develop things, we move forward and, and like, uh, Dr. Linda says, with the same language and understanding and, and the way of communicating. Councilmember Kathy?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, Dr. Linda, I have a, I have a question. When did and why did belonging get added to the DEI?
We, we went through some, um, discussions as we started developing a shared language uh, about the original RFP that asked for racial equity work. And, um, I shared with the leadership team, um, case study and, um, case studies from the city of Seattle and King County about their use of language, um, and their specific, specifically their use of racial equity toolkits and their different emphasis on race as a foundation for their uh, metrics and their outreach. Uh, their communities are quite different and larger, of course, and, um, have different demographics than does the city of Tom Water. So Tom Water doesn't have quite the racial diversity that, um, that lends itself to, um, pulling in racially diverse groups or racially, racial issues, I would say. So we talked a lot about what is our emphasis? Um, is it racial equity? And should we put a, an emphasis on, on helping uh, staff and leaders understand racial issues and racial consequences and racial, um, problems? Is that the right language for Tom Water? Or do we need to understand diversity in a larger context? And with that, um, the language of inclusion, equity and belonging um, seem to be a better fit for our emphasis on learning and our emphasis on how we roll, um, this shared language out to staff.
During if we could change the here so we can see her while we're talking.
How can you, can you do your?
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me just take off the.
Screen share.
Screen share. Sorry. Stop share.
There we go.
Now I feel like all together here.
Okay, I, I apologize. Yes. So that, that was a, um, uh, at least two-hour, uh, discussion and exploration and some reading and, Lisa might want to jump in here about how that discussion went. Though I don't think that we've felt like we are dropping the issue of race as a part of DEIB. It's just not the primary emphasis for the city of Tom Water.
I don't know. There's, there's something about the, the belonging part of this that.
I see. Oh, I see.
You know, that I'm wondering about because, you know, at all levels of, of, um, what we do, you know, as, as a city, I think, uh, what we do, you know, as as a city, I think uh making everyone feel like they belong is really important racially uh across the board. Um, I mean, I and some of the things that you wrote there that, I mean, listed. Um, the Tom Water does well now that it and it's progressed toward that, which is belonging. More women feel like they belong in the structures and the so forth of of the city of Tom Water, which wasn't the way Tom Water started out at all. And it was a long, it was a long process. And there's still some of that uh, you know, around. So I'm I'm just trying to figure out where the belonging fits. And and does that mean that we we belong to, as a council, we belong to um the decisions that are made? Do we belong to um a certain this belonging in a certain category like like racism or or misogyny or different? I'm just trying to get this whole thing all together because I think it's fit really, really important and I I wanna um thank you for, you know, taking this city so far through this and that um our leaders ask for this and have gone through it and participated in it. Yeah, I I think this is I think this is a very timely thing for Tom Water, even though we say and we we know we're not very racially diverse. But we're, we often see where we are diverse and uh I think these things apply to that and it's really important.
So let me quickly say that belonging is typically measured in terms of psychological safety. Uh, and that is typically translated in terms of how safe am I to contribute my honest thoughts and my honest feelings and my honest opinion? Uh, or am I, am I required to quote toe the line? Um, speak the speak the un unwritten rules. Uh, another measure of it is if I make a mistake, how long is that remembered in the organization? Do I never outlive that? How, how much am I allowed to be who I am? Um, within reason.
Yeah, that's a very good explanation. Yeah. I hear I hear that clearly.
I might I might just add, it's because um the Associated Washington Cities also has the diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging cabinet that I belong to. And part of what we also talked about with the word belonging is is to stop the us and them conversation and have us be as one group as opposed to us and them.
Yeah.
And then, and then my only, um, so I came, I I started at Tom Water after this project was already kicked off. John had already um gotten things going and Dr. Linda was under contract. My understanding in my initial learning was that the focus of the work of Dr. Linda was primarily on the organization itself. So it was internally focused. We're 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 foc- focused on the city of Tom Water as an organization and how we um can improve our our uh systems and our policies and our processes to become um a into to incorporate the concepts of diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging into what we're doing as an organization. And so I um that's that's been our primary focus. And I think that um the step of taking taking a step towards the shared language, um, starting with the leadership team in terms of how we lead our teams of employees. That's the first step. Um, in order to, in order to lead by example, walk or talk um and and really be a model of how to incorporate D E I B concepts into what we do every day. It was important that we have that shared language at the leadership team level, uh management team level, so that the expectations, the processes, the the permission, the um uh encouragement for our staff to to in incorporate and embrace the same shared language around D E I B concepts. It has been our focus at this point. I think there are other things that we need to be doing externally with our community as well. And that's I want to give a brief update on some work that we're um going to be embarking on that we've talked with, I think, most council members um uh about. Um, but I think just just to clarify, the work that we've done to date, as I understood it when I came in and what we've been moving towards is that the the work to date is internally focused on the city of Tom Water as an organization.
Can I make one other comment? I I hope that as we move forward that we don't downplay racism. I hope that we don't say that Tom Water doesn't have that issue or that we don't have that many diverse uh, you know, races in Tom Water. I think we ju- this we, I don't, I'm not expecting that that's what we'll do, but I just don't want to give off that that um idea that we, there are certain things we don't have to um worry about or work on as hard because we don't have and like um the mayor was saying, it's us and them, we we don't have those kind of people. Uh, so um, and I know we're being very careful in our language and I just want to emphasize emphasize that because we're doing such good work in other areas.
And and thank you for that. Um, Councilmember Kathy, that that's why that was a two hour conversation. Um, uh, at the management team level because that was precisely the conversation. It's like um um it, there's some some wordsmithing language that we were talking about and it was, it was not at all to downplay racial equity or racism. Absolutely. Those are issues that we have in Tom Water and we must deal with. Absolutely. I think the idea was to also recognize um that we have other equity issues and diversity issues that also need to be dealt with. Um, we have other ethnic groups. We have people who are uh low income folks who don't have the same access to services, our services and our facilities. And so it was not specifically not intended to take anything away from any single issue or to downplay any single issue, but rather to try and cast a bigger net. Um, which which is also not intended to um to um dilute the issues. It actually then allows us, as we're dealing with each different type of issue, it actually magnifies that issue, right? So we can, we, we have equity issues across the board. We need to deal with our racial equity issues. We need to deal with our low income issue, equity issues. And so it it's um, it's first a wider net that allows us then to also address the in more individual and specific focus. And I think Councilmember Jefferson has had her hand up for a bit.
Dr. Linda, this is a a question for you and the work that you are doing. Um, it seems to me that D E I is now a buzzword and it's used in a nick, in a negative manner. Um. For your work, are people, staff receptive? Do you feel pushback? Are you having positive conversations? How are you with this D E I work that you're doing?
I have not individually worked with staff yet. Uh, I would like like to do so, but I've heard from some managers that they've had uh some negative reactions from staff. Um, it doesn't surprise me uh in some of my work with other cities and counties, municipalities. Um, we've encountered that pushback that, you know, what what the heck is this and why, why do you, why are you taking my time to talk about this and uh, I don't need to know any of this. And politically, you're you're correct that there, you know, there's a certain faction of of people who see D E I as a really negative um uh negative thing where you lower the standards to hire uh higher people who are not qualified for the job they get hired for, which is not at all what you should be doing in your hiring practices. It not, not at all. Um, you want, you want to be using uh D E I in the definitions or shared language that I just, I just shit gave you where the diversity that you want in your organizations are are things that that augment your organization. A greater cultural competency. Um, you know, I've asked the question, do you need to change your job descriptions so that you have, for example, uh people who are multilingual? Um, and so one of the big pushbacks, uh, for instance, we, I've gotten in the past was from a an inspector uh uh out in the field who said, who gave us a story about trying to give a a code enforcement action to um a family uh who didn't speak English. And all he had with him were written documents in English. And he was trying to talk to the children so they could explain to the family what was going on. And that's a systematic failure, systematic dis- discrimination. So that's, that's the kinds of things that we're talking to organizations about. You've got a systems problem that discriminates against citizens who can't speak English. So whether they're refugees who speak Russian or uh they're they're immigrants who speak Spanish or whatever it might be, you look at the diversity of your community and you look at the abilities of the staff you have and you ask yourselves, what do we need to be able to deliver services in the way that our community expects of us? Um, and that's what you want in terms of an outcome. So what kind of diverse skills do we need? And what kind of rewards do we want to give our staff to get those diverse skills? Not that you want to fire them. It's that you want to make it an inclusive place where it's celebrated. So does that help?
Um, yes, it does help. It's it's just looking at that inclusion lens to to have everyone feel like they belong. So I wrote down belonging and inclusion is not necessarily a negative.
No, it's absolutely not intended to be. You should be celebrating your uh your ability to to provide great services and to create a city where people want to visit and want to live and can live and and can afford to live. And have have a playground where handicapped children can play. I mean, that would be just like cool.
Did that answer your question, Councilmember Jefferson?
Um, yes, I will remove my hand raised thingy here.
Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. This not necessarily for Dr. Linda, but just overall, is Tom Water still a member of GARE? And I had to look that up. Is the Government Alliance on Race and Equity? And then how does that play in? And then the overall question, you know, the state agency, the Office of Equity, there, you know, the evolving language that we're using as a state employee for my other job is pro equity, anti racist. And the Office of Equity and GARE, how does all that play in, Dr. Linda and staff, with like all the great stuff you're doing and the foundation you're setting?
So very quickly, we're the, uh, we are still a member of GARE. Uh, we are definitely obviously paying attention to what the uh the GARE materials have and we're trying to incorporate and uh make them work for Tom Water within the, with the framework we have. Um, GARE is a very detailed process. Uh, and it's it's, I I don't want to we have to make sure it works for us and we can translate it. So we're using it as a resource, not necessarily the guide.
Thank you.
As well as is the Office of Equity, you know, they have some, they have a lot of of F T Es to put at their effort. And I've been trying to be sensitive and cognizant to the resource constraints at Tom Water and to be working with the leadership team so that they incorporate D E I B and and race and racial equity issues and principles into the work they're already doing. Not to create a new program necessarily. But let's incorporate these values into the service levels you're already delivering.
Councilmember Catherine?
Thank you. And I just wanted to, I was thinking of Angela asking that question about, you know, how much negative there is around D E I and how people jump on things like that. And I just wanted to say, uh, like I heard today, that um Kamala Harris is a D E I. You know, of whatever she is, hopefully next president of the United States, but uh but that's what they're saying. I mean, that's just the example of how, you know, people pick up on things like and and just turn them upside down for negative reasons. And I think that's another important thing to the organization at whatever level needs to be careful to not be negative. I think that that really hurts a lot of the things that we talked about here, Dr. Linda, today is that people get negative about things or they, you know, they 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 want to fight back or they want to make someone else feel blessed.
And I think that's where the organizational culture comes in. That this becomes part of your culture and part of your values. That this is not a a program that's looking at you as a racist or a program that's looking at you as a bad person. This is not a program per se that's out to, out to find bad guys. Out to find somebody who's made a mistake or said a wrong thing or is doing something wrong. This, this is not that. This is about your culture of inclusion and belonging and equity and um, just being better people, being more self-aware.
And no matter who you are, no matter who you are, whether, no matter what, and no matter where you come from or
Right.
What, what anything is like they used it today against her, you know, I mean, it's just.
Yeah, just being more self-aware that we, we all have biases. I I don't care who you are. Uh, anybody who says they don't is not very self-aware. Um, it's, it's how we become better people, more self-aware.
So just mentioning that bias thing, that was one of the things that I wanted to mention. I'll probably bring it up later is I went to an amazing workshop on biases and watching the light bulbs going on in that room as people became aware was so remarkable. And and so that's something that I think that we need to focus on more. So I actually have all the contact information from the consultant who broke it down in such a way that was be able to relate to the audience in such a fashion that it was, it was very interesting, but I think biases play such a huge part in all of this that, um, yeah, it wa- it was, um, there's some different instructors bring out different things for different audiences. And it was uh just a really, I, it was fun to watch all the light bulbs go on for people.
I, I just wanted to say that, um, I think it is the, it is an intentional strategy to ensure that the leadership team, the management team becomes comfortable with the language. That one of the things that I observed as I was talking about this to the directors as I first was starting my tenure here is there wasn't a full, complete picture on the part of all the directors as to why we were doing something, what we were supposed to be doing, what what the language meant. They they were, they were doing their duty, they were following the instructions, but it, there wasn't a um, there wasn't a a complete and thorough understanding of everything. And in order for us to expect our staff to become more comfortable with the concepts and the values that are expressed by an organization that is diverse and equitable and inclusive, um, we needed to make sure that the management team was was in there as well. And that then it becomes clear that the expectation is that this is an expectation. These are our values. It's not a program. It's not a thing that we do extra. It's how we function and how we operate. So that those concepts and ideas are It's how we function and how we operate. So that those concepts and ideas around, um, inclusion, diversity, equity, belonging are, are inherent in what we do, not extra. And so that's really what I feel like we've been doing over the last several months is trying to develop in, in, and learning, right? I mean, people, um, people are uncomfortable when there's new and different things that come to light. And a lot of times people react very negatively if they're uncomfortable or they're fearful of something. You know, fear can manifest in, you know, negative statements. Um, and, um, and so, uh, that's, that's been part of the intention here is to get more of us more comfortable with the concepts and have a shared understanding of what the ideas and the concepts are. So we can then model that and carry it forward and create the expectation that that's what the City of Tumwater as an organization is.
Um, can I make a comment? And once we have those shared values, um, cause I know when I was in the military, we had those shared values and we can, you know, we can, we can, we can, it can filter down to your soldiers. And I remember when I first came, um, on the council at my job interview. And Joan asked me a question about, about race. And I told her, you know, this is hard to talk about. And knowing that there are just a few, um, African Americans in Tumwater. You know, that's gonna be a challenge for us, but we have to talk about it. So. And I'm just glad that we're talking about it and building that foundation, building that culture. So eventually this culture is gonna filter down to our community. So they can see, hey, we're having this hard discussion. You do belong here. You know, these are the programs that we're gonna install so that you feel like you do belong. So thank you so much for that.
Councilmember Agadi, you had your hand up for a while.
Thank you, Mayor, um. I am, uh, very, very glad that, that we're actually talking about that this. I was born in Nigeria and I don't know if any of you know. If you go to the US Census Bureau or to the Cato Institute, uh, study, Nigerians have the most educated, are the most educated immigrant in America. Versus natural born American, Nigeria is like fifty-two. Americans are like with thirty-nine, South Asians are like forty, we are like fifty-two, sixty-two. So what I'm getting at is this equity, inclusion and belonging, yes. For those who jump at epitaph, those are those who have the least to contribute to any meaningful discussion. To them, right, the cerebral cortex fear takes over their, their being. Yeah, I would say back Kamala Harris, but you know, if I don't have anything better to say, I start to, I start, uh, with the innuendos. The here is a lady who was a what, DA, San Francisco? Attorney General California, the biggest state in the Union. A country of its own, a vice president, and here it just says from Tennessee. I mean, please, please. Ignorance is a bliss. At the same time, ignorance is a disease. Because in one ignorance, you assume superiority which nobody, not even biology has confirmed upon you. So back to the City of Tumwater, we do have issues. We have racial issues. And if the City of Tumwater have diversity, equity and inclusion and belonging and whether you call it a commission or you call it a policy, it helps everyone of us because it tests everybody that comes to the City of Tumwater that hey, we are, this is who we are. You can come here as long as you abide by our rules, you, you don't break any rules. You are a productive citizen, you can, you will live here and be a productive citizen. That is why we're here. That is why I run for office. And for those that think that DEI takes something away from them, okay, yeah, they can live. We are fifty, we are fifty states in the Union. They could go south, wherever, we don't care. But what I do know is this. I am glad that tonight we're actually discussing this in Tumwater. And thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome. You're welcome. And I'm glad you feel welcome in Tumwater.
Any other questions? So thank you, Dr. Linda. I really appreciate it. And this has been a long ongoing process. And sometimes it doesn't seem like we're doing anything, but we're doing a lot. It's just the building of foundation part is probably the most, um, unceremonial part of all of this, but it's the part you have to do and make sure it's done before you build anything else. So.
Yes. Well, good luck in your budget process.
Mayor, did you want me to, uh, up to, um, do the, uh, quick briefing on the Equity Commission work?
Yeah, this would be a good time.
Okay, so, uh, one of the things, and we've talked with a couple of council members again, most council members except for a couple, I think, either mayor, uh, either the mayor or myself, uh, or both. Um, recognizing that Tumwater does have racial issues, racial tension, there's been instances. Um, council members and community, community members have brought those to light. So, uh, working with some staff and working with the mayor, um, what, what we would like to do, what we are going to be doing here over the next course, uh, of the, the next, the course of the next few months, sorry. Um, we're gonna be exploring the idea of, um, creating an equity commission for the City of Tumwater. Um, the first step to doing that is understanding, um, what the issues are in, in Tumwater and how we go about understanding and learning from people what their experiences are in Tumwater. So our first steps, um, are really to do, um, over the course of this next few months before the end of the year, um, to really do some listening and some research. So we are reaching out to leaders, um, in the, um, uh, primarily in the BIPOC community. So, uh, we have a list of people that we're going to be, uh, meeting with individually, asking them advice and suggestions for how to book, go about the process of learning from people, what their issues and experiences are. Um, and, um, understanding what kinds of issues an equity commission would be addressing or what kinds of tasks and purposes would be assigned to an equity commission. And then, um, once we understand sort of the structure and the types of things we should be asking and how we should get some input, we hope to have, um, meetings with people. And these are not focus groups, they're not public meetings, they're, they're individual meetings with the mayor, mayor and council member, mayor and staff. A wide variety of opportunities for us to meet with as many people as we can to learn what their experiences are specifically around, at this point, around racism and equity, um, and understand from them and learn. Um, so at the same time we're doing that, we will also be taking a look at what some other cities are doing. They'll, uh, some cities are doing a lot of work around this topic, obviously. Um, just, uh, looked at, you know, City of Lacey and City of, uh, Olympia both have equity commissions, social justice equity commissions. Um, they have different tasks, they have different purpose statements, uh, they have a different makeup. So we wanna do a, a, uh, a series of uh, research projects just to suss out what are other jurisdictions doing, what are their cities doing around equity commissions? So that by the end of the year, we'll have a work plan going forward that'll talk about, um, you know, should we adopt a resolution, uh, if we're creating a, an equity commission, what are the basics of an equity commission? What are its purposes? Um, and then the plan at this point is to include money in the budget for early twenty twenty-five that we would then use to hire somebody to help, um, um, help with setting up, help us with, uh, appointing an initial equity commission, helping that commission working through the process of establishing its, um, bylaws and its procedures and, um, really beginning to um, help it get on its feet. Um, and the budget will also, uh, need to be, um, cognizant of the resources necessary um, from a staffing perspective to support that type of, uh, of an entity. And so, um, we've had this conversation. We've talked with, uh, Councilmember Jefferson and, and Agabe and, uh, I've, I've talked to Councilmember Von Holtz. I think, uh, Mary Sullivan has talked to a couple of other council members, um, about this concept and about helping with this concept. Um, and at this point, it seems like it's, uh, um, we are moving forward. I'm, I'm working with Jason, uh, on this. Uh, as well as Joy Johnston, who was, um, uh, you know, is our, uh, our, um, contracted communications and PR person. She's done a lot of work in this arena um, for other cities specifically. So, um, I'm excited to get started on that. Um, uh, it'll be a bunch of individual meetings to start with, but, um, I believe it's one way in which we can create an avenue and a venue for the conversations that need to happen around race and racial te- racial tension and equity even more generally, um, in Tumwater. I think it's a way in which, uh, we can address some of those. Provide a voice and, and, and an opportunity for people to be heard around those issues. Councilmember, yes, ma'am.
Uh, me? Thank you, Administrator Parks. Um, the one question, cause I have been gone, so I have not heard this, is hearing, and this is super exciting, the work that's happening these few months, I have not seen the hours that this is gonna take and what needs to drop below that line that we have. Because in our current biennial budget, we don't have an equity commission accounted for in the hours of staff. So what is getting pushed down below that red line for this work happening in the next five months of this year? Cause it's not allocated in this biennial budget.
But the, the majority of staff time is, there is, there's budget allocated for support for professional services to help with this. So Joy is doing a lot of work. Um, there was an expectation that there would be some, I, you know, I don't, I don't know who, I don't think they, um, accounted, uh, by hours, which types of, uh, work was, was, would happen or not happen. There is an obvious emphasis on DEI at, at, at the city. So the time that's being spent has mostly been me talking, thinking a little bit, um, in amongst the spreadsheets of budgets. And it's been me talking to Joy and the mayor, it's been the mayor thinking through things. It's been the two of us talking to other, to, to council members, to other members of the community. But the majority of the work to date is going to be Jason and Joy and mayor and, and, um, and council members talking to people initially. So we're going to do it within the capacity that we have currently.
So nothing's getting dropped. I just wanna clarify that. So when I circle back with some other items, nothing is getting dropped that's currently in our biennial budget that's been allocated to do.
I don't know the answer to that, Lieta, not to my knowledge.
Got it. Thank you. Well, I'm referring to, this is a study on, um, uh, compensation for boards and commissions, right? It's July, we have to the end of the year. So could that play into this work when we talk about inclusion and belonging of community members on boards and commissions potentially? So it doesn't get dropped?
Potentially. So one of the things that I am doing this summer is I'm trying to meet with each of the boards and commissions to have the conversation, to do, have an initial conversation about board, about stipends, for example. And, um, I, I don't know that there, that study will be done by this biennial, but the budget has been, I've included in, in this next biennial budget in the professional services to make sure that we are able to do a, a study for, um, to do more work other than just me talking to the, the boards and commissions, but trying to get some feedback from them about whether or not they think is, uh, are they well-resourced?
Right. Can we also add, cause they're obviously still on the boards and commission, could we make sure we circle back to people who have left because of whatever reason and capture that data as well?
Sure.
Awesome. Thank you, Lisa. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Councilmember Kathy?
Yes, I, uh, I just wanted to, uh, bring up that in in this discussion tonight, and I don't know if it's been discussed anywhere along the line here, but it has in a, in a broader sense. I remember when we first did some of this work as a full council and took those six weeks or something class, um, LGBTQ, um, and the, you know, kind of attitude toward that. I know that, uh, the City of Tumwater has, uh, you know, took up that early in, in the quest for rights for, for people. Um, but I, I feel like it's faded a little bit and it's still there. And it's still out there and it's amazing some of, uh, over the last year. Um, some of the students at high school level stu- students who have, uh, sought me out to talk to me. And I, I just think that we shouldn't leave that out. Uh, I think that that should be part of the conversation. I don't know if it's when we're talking about racism or what, what we're doing, but I just would like to ask that that gets included so Tumwater continues to, uh, you know, be seen as a safe place. Yeah, or a pioneer in, in the early caring about the gay people. So anyway.
I just, I think. Yeah, I think, uh, thank you for that, Councilmember Kathy. That is, um, absolutely a component of what we're talking about doing um, with the, particularly with the Equity Commission. And that's part of the research, right? What, what are, some cities are very specific about. I think the City of Olympia, for example, is social justice and racial equity. It's, right? So it's got a specific focus, whereas the City of Lacey has, um, is more generalized. It's an equity commission or commission on equity. I can't remember exactly how they put it, but, um, the intent is not to leave, um, our LGBTQ plus community out at all, because I think particularly, you know, Dr. Linda talked about, we don't have necessarily a very, a, a, a significant diversity in terms of race, but we obviously have a lot of other, um, people who are experiencing, um, uh, a lack of equity and a lack of access to things and that would, and, and, and are experiencing some hate and some negativity and, and pain. And that's, and everybody needs to be included in terms of trying to, um, give them a voice and give them an opportunity to be heard and to use this equity commission in the future, hopefully, as an avenue for people to have the conversations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? There's more to come on this. So, uh, um, this is just the beginning. All right, next item we're going to be doing is the, um, municipal finance two oh one budget, and I will turn it over to Troy.
Thank you, Mayor, and can you, can you see the screen yet? There we go.
There you go.
Okay. All right. Well, good evening, everybody. Uh, it's hard to follow Dr. Linda with something like budget, but, um, here we are. And so this is, uh, number four in the series of four, uh, municipal finance two oh one, uh, presentations. And we'll jump right in here. So start with talking about what, what is a budget. And I, and this presentation isn't super long because I think, I think a lot of you already have a pretty good understanding of budget. So kinda, kinda high level and hit the good points here. So a budget is appropriations. It's our spending authority. It's also a spending plan. It's a legal document. Uh, we have a biennial budget, as you know, which, uh, a nice advantage of that is we're gonna do a whole bunch of work this year on the budget, but the next year we, we have a little breathing room and we can focus on some other things. Um, so that's really nice. Um, the challenge with the biennial budget is we're trying to forecast our revenues and expenditures uh, out two and a half years from right now, uh, which makes it a little harder than a, a single year budget. Uh, but it, it's definitely worth the trade-off. Um, a budget is also aligned with council goals and priorities and it is approved by the governing body. There's a lot of requirements around, uh, the budget. There's some legal requirements, uh, like it has to be approved, uh, by the end of this year. Uh, we have to submit that to the state auditor and MRSC and we have to publish it. Uh, there's also kind of some legal processes that go with it as we work through the budget. Um, this fall, we, we will need to have two public hearings and then of course the budget will need to be passed by ordinance and it can only be amended by ordinance. So where do we start? Well, we actually started back at the council retreat at the beginning of this year. Um where we, you know, we took a little bit of time to appreciate some of the the recent accomplishments, and then we got right back to work. Uh updating the goals and priorities of the council. Uh since that time, we've been doing some workforce planning, um so we're fi- trying to figure out what what is it that departments need? Uh what resources do they do they need to do their do their jobs and do them well, and are we facing any constraints? Uh we've also been working on a salary survey, which we talked about at the council retreat uh to update the nonrepresented compensation plan. And so that is in progress. Uh next steps is we will, we will have a general fund revenue forecast, uh some some um strategic planning has. Has been ongoing, as many of you know, uh police and fire have been doing some of that. And then the ongoing DEIB, DEIB work uh that you heard about tonight. Um in addition to that, um Dan Smith has been working uh with with a contractor on a rate study for all of the utilities. And so that's looking out ten or more years, uh trying to figure out what is it that our our utilities need to to stay properly maintained? And to to handle the upcoming growth and um and stay financially viable as well. So when we estimate the needs of the city, of course, we look at money, we also look at people, projects, and uh like like many cities. Uh probably all over the country, uh our needs pretty much always uh are greater than our resources. And so uh that means there's there's gonna be some tough decisions ahead. Um other considerations that go into the budget, of course, the state of the economy, where is it at today, where is it gonna be in twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six? Uh inflation is still on the radar. Uh staff costs, staff salaries and benefits are are a big deal cuz it's such a big part of our budget. Um and all the all the programs, you know, do we have any, are there new legal requirements we have to follow? Are there unfunded mandates that we received from the state legislature, um things like that, everything is is thought through. And some key considerations for this this budget in particular. Um personnel, and we talked about that a little bit, as far as, well, there's two things, the 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 salary study that we discussed, and then also. Uh we have been finding uh that that many departments are are, or actually, all of our departments are under-resourced in terms of people. Uh facilities, we've got a lot of uh buildings out there that um. Are really in need of some maintenance, and some of that's been deferred, not uncommon among cities, it's kind of an easy, when the budget gets tight, it's kind of. Uh one of those easy things to cut back on, and we think we'll get it next year, and then um next year and next year, it just kind of trickles down. Um and then space, um you know, we we think we've got a need to hire some people, but we really don't have any place to put them, and so. Um if if we hire nine new police officers, they don't have a place to to be in city hall, and so. A lot of uh really important considerations that we're gonna have to work through. And I'm gonna go over our the the budget process at the staff level for a minute, um so. Probably first for many bienniums, um the process was basically um we send out, um finance sends out. A whole bunch of schedules in Excel to um to the directors. Um those are for everything, uh it's really kind of the big things, we don't, we don't want office supplies on on your schedule. These schedules are for like, if you're asking for new people, or if you're asking for professional services, money, training, capital projects, things like that. So each director fills out eleven schedules, some fill out more, because some um and some have multiple funds or multiple departments. Uh under their purview. Um so we also have a schedule for uh staff suggestions, and we get some pretty good ideas from those, so that's nice. Um so then uh the process would be each each director meets with the city administrator and the finance director. From there, the mayor and the city administrator have some meetings, make a bunch of tough decisions, and then come out with the mayor's proposed budget. This year, we're changing that process up a little bit. Uh we're taking a first team approach, and the items in the green font there are the changes. Um so we're actually adding some steps to the process, where um it's instead of. Uh just me and Lisa meeting one on one with each director, it's the entire director group meeting together. Uh so that we all hear each other's ideas and wants and needs uh for the budget. Uh we get to explain what we're asking for, uh the other directors have a chance to ask questions. Um this is still gonna, we'll still have the, you know, the Marins and Lisa uh. Make make some really tough decisions, but then there'll also be a circle back with the management team to to talk about it and explain. Why this got funded and this other thing didn't. So kind of understand the rationale behind things better, um and then, of course, the mayor's proposed budget uh will be shared. And it seems to be going pretty well so far, um at least from my opinion, we'll find out, we're gonna have a debrief after the whole budget's done, but. You know, taking that first team approach, I think, is giving all the directors a greater understanding of the needs facing the entire city, instead of just their own departments. Uh it definitely improved transparency and hopefully breaking down some silos. So um in the not too distant future, we will have the mayor's proposed budget coming out. Last time, it was three hundred and seventy nine pages, uh excellent reading material. Uh starts with the mayor's message, uh for those who may not have seen it last time, um and then it includes the council goals and priorities. The financial summary, which is uh basically all the budget numbers uh presented in there. And then all of those schedules that I mentioned are also included, so you can dig as deep as you want in there, you can see every single document. That that was submitted uh for the budget, and it's it's good stuff. Uh Councilmember Dahlhoff, I see your hand up.
Thank you Troy, regarding that, um how do you want, how does staff want to know whether we want it hard copy or not? What does that look like?
We will reach out. Yeah, we'll we'll probably have, I imagine, we haven't talked about that yet, but I imagine we'll have Brittany reach out and say. Do you want, you know, electronic will be available for everybody, and it's no problem to make card copies for everybody too.
Yeah, thanks Troy.
You bet. Okay, so uh uh after the mayor's proposed budget comes out, um we have this period from September to December. Where there'd be a whole bunch more work, and it'll involve all of you, uh we will have three budget workshops. Um so these these last presentations we've been with doing like this one. Um are more just just high level and educational, the budget workshops will actually be digging into the items in the budget. So it'll be giving you detail about what this, what the budget, general fund budget is, and what the police budget is, and water and everything else. Uh we will also, along the way, have two public hearings to comply with state law. Uh we will pass two property tax levies, one for the city and one for the metropolitan parks district. Uh we will adopt a fees, the fee schedule for twenty twenty five, and then finally, uh I think it's scheduled for December sixth, early December anyway. We will adopt the budget. So um these last few slides are just just kind of some reminders, things we've maybe touched on before, but um you might have. Just in case anyone missed anything, and it's a good reminder you're heading as we launch into the budget too. Um so we budget at the fund level, um the general fund is is the primary operating fund of the city and. Has police, fire, parks, streets, community development, and all the supports staff uh for the city, and so. There's a lot of a lot of competing priorities um using that same, using one uh pot of money. And then, of course, we have the utilities, um golf and our internal service funds and the CFPs. Uh as an overview for the expenditures for the current biennial, we had nearly seventy percent, uh sixty eight percent to be precise. Uh of the of the budget was salaries and benefits, so that's again, just takes up a huge chunk. And unfortunately, we have to still talk about inflation, so it is going down, continues to go down nationally, it's down to three percent. Uh locally, in our area, it's three point eight. Um and uh these were presented previously, so just a very quick recap, this is kind of what the big inflation curve looked like. Uh and this was the cumulative cumulative inflation, and so just to a reminder again, that even though the inflation rate is down significantly. Prices in in a lot of cases haven't really come down, so we're still, that's still a challenge for the city and and our personal budgets. And so final consideration, um you know, if if revenue in the general fund increases by five percent. And inflation is still sitting at three point eight, and prices haven't come down, what's left out of that five percent? Um and it's, the answer is not not a whole lot, and that's that's why there's so many tough decisions that we're gonna have to make. Uh but I know we're all up for the task, so. Um I will stop sharing my screen and if there's any other questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions? It'll be more interesting when you start seeing actual pieces of paper, numbers, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I I know the the concept of budget isn't super exciting, it's hard to follow Dr. Linda after, you know, with something like this, but. Um we'll give you some real numbers pretty soon.
Uh Councilmember Jefferson, did you have something?
Yes Troy, I appreciate how you broke it down, budget one oh one, budget two oh one, like college course. And it was just easily digestible and user-friendly, and I appreciate that.
No, thank you.
I enjoyed the slides Troy, thank you.
Good, I'm glad.
Yeah, it it is complicated, and we can't expect everybody to know all of these processes when they first come on council, so it's. Helpful to understand this, and and then when you finally see it, and then you go, yeah, it it. It's easier to understand when we have those conversations.
Well, I guess another uh. Maybe challenge of the biennial budget is uh even those that have been around for a while, we only do this every other year, so. You don't have the repetition um like you do with other things, so.
Great, any other questions? Alright, with that, we're gonna move, we do have one thing for council considerations, and we're doing this because. Of the timeline of when this needs to happen, and then we have our council recess, so. That is why we're putting it on this uh work session agenda. So it is the interlocal agreement and memorandum of understanding between the city of Tom Water and Thurston County regarding. The Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Program, and so I'll have Lisa start.
Alright, well, I'm going to attempt the technology, and not sure I'm going to do a great job of it. Are you seeing the?
Yep.
Notes, okay. Okay, so uh as the mayor mentioned, this is about the CDBG um county entitlement program. That Thurston County qualifies for um with the um uh Department of Housing and Urban Development, so. Um the Community Development Block Program has both an entitlement component, which is um. Uh an allocation based on population and um income levels, and uh among other things. There's also a competitive program for CDBG funds that are administered through a variety of sources. We're talking specifically about um urban county entitlement funds that Thurston County qualified for um beginning in two thousand and thirteen. So there was originally an um an interlocal agreement, and I asked why there's an interlocal agreement and a memorandum of understanding. And the way it was explained to me by our very wise counsel is that. The interlocal agreement contains the majority of what um HUD requires as a component of saying, uh electing to do. Um the urban county entitlement program, whereas that memorandum of understanding talks about how. The um partners to those agreements are going to govern and distribute and allocate uh the funds, so it's a little bit more detailed in terms of how we do it. So the original um program included both Thurston County and Tom Water, as well as the city of Lacey. Um the uh agreement is essentially a three-year term of of how these funds are to be used and allocated. Um there's an automatic renewal for an additional three-year term, but there also is a requirement that the county provide notice. At the end of each three-year, or right before the end of each three-year term, allowing the parties to withdraw if they would choose. Um the um current allocation that we're operating under allocated. Each um the total annual amount coming to Thurston County. Uh would go on a one-year rotation between Thurston County, Tom Water and Lacey. Um but first, a twenty percent um uh component of the total amount would be taken off and given to the county to administer the program. So basically, Tom Water receives money every third year under this um current program. And you all just went through the process of allocating that that money out um earlier this year. So um as a part of, this is, this was the end of um the the current thirty-year program. So the county provided notice in the spring to both us and Lacey, letting us know that we could re- withdraw. Um Lacey has for a while now actually qualified to be their own independent entitlement community, the same way in which the city of Olympia is. Um so in this uh go-around, the city of L- Lacey elected to not participate in the Thurston County program. But instead to be their own entitlement community. Um so that is what is requiring this new interlocal agreement and and memorandum of understanding. Um it now becomes a two-party agreement, is it is it essentially the same, it has the three-year term as well as the automatic renewal. Along with a notice um uh to withdraw process. Um primarily that um we still are allocating the total amount on a rotating basis, minus the twenty percent for. Um the county to administer the program, but it is um Tom Water receives less money overall. But we're receiving it every other year instead of every third year. Um so um essentially uh the, when when Thurston County gets its allocation from the CDBG. Program, that money is also dependent on if there are other cities within the county that are their own entitlement community. So by by Lacey leaving, the total pot coming to Thurston County is reduced overall. Um by a certain percentage, and it's all formulaic, and I can't tell you the precise numbers, um um. Uh but uh the total amount is going down, that's available to Thurston County and the city of Tom Water. But we will be getting it every two years instead of every third year, and again, as the mayor mentioned, um. The county is required uh to meet HUD deadlines by submitting this information by August fifteenth. Uh which happens um before, that deadline happens before and during our current, our upcoming recess, and so. Uh recognizing that you do not like to take action at a uh work session, I appreciate that. Um this is um necessary for the county's um uh timeline in order to be able to comply with the HUD um deadlines. So I'm happy to answer any questions, I do have an a motion for you, this is slightly different. Than the motion in your staff report, only because I added this between the city of Tom Water and Thurston County. It was a long motion, and it was um I just neglected to put those words in there, I thought those would be important for the motion. But the requested action is uh is is on the slide, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Alright, with uh Councilor Kathy, did you have a question?
No, I just wanted to refer people to the requested action and say, uh so moved.
Okay, so do you you wanna make that motion, Councilor Kathy?
Yes, I do.
Alright, I second you.
Do I need to read the thing that's on there?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and read it, that way we know what we're what we're doing.
Authorized the mayor to sign the interlocal agreement and memorandum of understanding. Between the city of Tom Water and Thurston County for joint participation and governance. In the Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Program administered by the US Department of Housing. And Urban Development.
And I second that motion.
Okay, so it's been moved by Councilmember Kathy and seconded by Councilmember Jefferson. Any uh any comment on the motion? So thi- this is a great program, and and it, and in our meeting, I mean, it's a total guesstimate of what, how much it'll be reduced. The guesstimate is like three hundred thousand possibly, but we get it every other year, so. It'll work out that top, it'll be easier for us to remember too, because it it with this rotation, Tom Water will be in even years. County will be in odd years, so it we can be planning and having a um more in involvement in. It's sometimes it just seemed like a long time, it was every three years, so.
I would think that the amount would go up.
Uh no, cuz there's an overall amount, so once that overall amount comes out.
In what we would get?
Yeah, it'll be about three hundred thousand less per rotation, but that was just a guesstimate, but we'll get it more often, so it'll. It 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 should still be very beneficial. Right, if there's no questions, I'm gonna call for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Alright, motion carries unanimous, thank you everyone. All right, motion carries unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Um, yeah, and I, we, county was very clear. They have got to get this into HUD by the deadline of August fifteenth, so. All right, with that, we'll go to Mayor's City Administrator Report. Uh City Administrator Parks, do you have?
Just a couple of really quick things. Um, a reminder that tomorrow is our um um Capitol Trosper ribbon cutting um at the corner of uh Capitol Boulevard and Trosper Road. I hope um many of you can make it. Um, there was an invitation that went out to, um, we had some uh community members as well as um a former former city officials and funding agencies. We've invited them to attend. So that invitation went out. It should have been in your um council member update, hopefully, on Friday. Um, if not, I can, uh, it's basically one o'clock at the southwest corner of Capitol Boulevard and Trosper. And um parking is a little bit limited, so if you can carpool or um uh come to the event and maybe you could walk. I don't know. Uh, but um there's question, or excuse me, there's parking on a couple of different streets, Linda Street, Ruby Street, Lee Street. Um, it won't take very long, but uh we just wanted to celebrate because it was a big project, and we're happy to uh have it done as our our community, I'm sure. Um, second thing, uh, we are continuing to do fun things uh with our recreation program. Uh, we had our first screen on the green last uh Friday, and we actually did it here at City Hall in the back lawn here, um where the uh old drive-in theater used to be. So they showed Goonies, and it was well attended, it sounded like. Um, uh, this Friday, they're gonna be out at Barkliff Park, um showing the film Migration. And then August second, they'll be at Kindred Park, and then August ninth, down at Tumwater Valley Golf Course. So all of that information's on the website, and um I'd encourage you to um get the word out and and have people come and enjoy that awesome event. And then one last thing on the Davis Miko Gary Oak Tree. Um, we did utilize the recommendations that were made by council members at the last meeting. And we collected five total um re- five or six total requests for qual- or excuse me, responses to our request for qualification. We sent those to the Chair of the Tree Board, as well as the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. They had the weekend to review those. They provided feedback um uh on their um evaluation of those uh submissions. Uh, we then, from there, selected three to interview. We had three interviews today. Um, the mayor will be making a final decision on that consultant um team, and we'll be notifying them tomorrow um and beginning the contracting process. Um, we do need to um evaluate permitting requirements with both Department of Historic Preservation and um uh Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation. Um, and we do need to be cognizant of the Kestrels and the Migratory Bird Treaty Act. Um, uh, although uh that provision of law only is in effect when the birds are actually using the tree. Um, and so that um we understand from US Fish and Wildlife Service that the the kestrels that are using that tree are are likely to be gone by early August or early to mid-August. Um, so that's all I had, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilmember Kathy?
Yes, I I just wanted to, I just wanted to thank uh the two leaders here. Uh, you, Mayor Sullivan, and you, Administrator Parks, for considering what was said at the last council meeting and putting it in with the interviews uh for the the contractor for the Gary Oak. I I personally appreciated a lot, and I I heard from others that they were, they were happy about that, so. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that. All right, so, um, are you, that's it for you? Count, um, okay, perfect. So uh again, reminder, I'm sure I do not need to remind everyone that you have a three-week uh break. Uh, so uh we will be uh back in three weeks for a city council meeting. And also, since this will be after or before that we are back, I want to just remind you and everyone else that uh the Brew Fest is August seventeenth, and then that's another one of our very large events. And so, um, you know, want to make sure everyone is aware and can attend. And I'm sure if you want to volunteer, I'm sure there'll be a multitude of volunteer uh uh opportunities there. So um, look forward to that. And so if there's nothing else, um, we will adjourn and enjoy your recess. So thank you, everyone.